I hereby call the meeting of the City Council for Monday, June 22nd, 2020, 7:00 PM to order. Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States.
America.
To the republic.
To the republic.
Which stands one nation.
Under God.
And indivisible.
Liberty. Liberty and justice for all.
The following is the Governor's order regarding open meeting laws. Out of respect for public health and in response to the Governor's declared state of emergency, this meeting will be closed to the public and interested parties can instead access the deliberations via a live stream, which is www.youtube.com/user/thebrocktonchannel/live, except for this evening. This evening it will be posted right after, right after the meeting because we're having some technical issues, but it is Facebook Live. This meeting is being held in accordance with Governor Charlie Baker's signed open meeting law order dated March 12th, 2020, which relieves the public body from the requirements of Section 20 of Chapter 30A that it conduct its meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provision to ensure public access to the deliberations of the public body for interested members of the public through adequate alternative means. Councillors, once again, please mute if you're not speaking because we can hear some background noise. So, once again, we're having technical difficulties. This is being livestreamed on Facebook, but it will be posted to YouTube as soon as the meeting is done. And of course, you can view it on cable, Community Access Channel 12.
Madam President? I understand we are on BCA Live. I just had someone text message me.
Yes, we are on BCA Live, but not YouTube.
Okay, thank you.
It's YouTube that they're having a problem posting it to.
Thank you.
No problem. So, before we begin, Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll for attendance? Attorney Resnick.
Asak?
Present.
Cruz?
Present.
I mean, Cudozo, sorry, Cudozo?
Present.
Cruz?
Present.
Ian Airy?
He's on here. I see him, but he's muted.
Counselor Ian Airy?
Present.
Farwell?
Present.
Lally?
Present.
Mendez?
Present.
Monahan?
Present.
Nacastro? Nacastro?
Present, sorry.
Rodriguez?
Present.
Thompson?
Present.
We have all 11 councillors tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we have our clerk on this evening with us. Agenda item number one.
The acceptance of the City Council minutes of May 26th, 2020 meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have the appointment of promotion of firefighter Kevin B. Sullivan to the rank of Fire Lieutenant in the Brockton Fire Department.
Counselor Monahan?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to take numbers two through nine collectively and act on them tonight and suspend other rules.
Actually, can we do number two? Because we, number two by itself, Counselor, because the other, we actually have the future Lieutenant Kevin Sullivan on the line with us and he has a few members there. He's actually here with us. Where's the other?
Okay. Make a motion to take number three through nine collectively and act on them.
Okay, how about number two? You're making a motion to take number two.
And the suspension of the rules.
And the suspension of the rules and act on it this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
A motion's been made and properly seconded to take number two out of, under suspension of the rules and act on it this evening. Before we vote, Counselor Cruz, did you want to, did you have something to say?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to take a minute before we vote for Mr. Sullivan, who's a very deserving candidate. I think we would be remiss, even in this tough times of Zoom meetings, to not mention the man. He's taking the place of, there are very few public servants who have given so much of their life to protecting the people of Brockton and their own brother firefighters and also working with his union to work with the city of Brockton in tough financial times. Archie Goomly, even though I tease him risklessly when I see him, has been a great public servant for the city of Brockton and a great representative of what our public servants are. So, Mr. Sullivan can have a tough shoes to fill and I just wanted to, even though it is a Zoom meeting and it's not the same thing, I just wanted to wish Archie the best of luck. And again, I think he's been a lesson to many young public servants on what they should be for the city of Brockton. So, thank you and.
Thank you, Counselor.
Good luck to Mr. Goomly.
Thank you, Counselor Cruz. So, right now, we're voting on taking this item, the promotion under suspension of the rules and act on it this evening. Attorney Resnick, roll call, please.
Asak?
Yes.
Cudozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That's 11 in the affirmative.
Now, we're voting on the promotion. A roll call, Attorney Resnick.
Asak?
Yes.
Cudozo?
Sorry, yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yeah.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The promotion passes favorably. Congratulations, Lieutenant Sullivan. We also have Chief Williams on with us and we also have, if you want, did you want to say a word, Chief?
Just congratulations to Kevin Sullivan. He's been one of my finest firefighters for several years, so congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Did you want to say anything, Lieutenant?
Sure, I'd like to thank the Chiefs, the Mayor and the Councillors for making this happen in this crazy time, so I appreciate it and thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And we also have Captain Nadelli.
Deputy Chief.
Oh, Deputy Chief, sorry. I just, I just see him moving. Deputy Chief Nadelli, sorry. Did you want to say anything?
God, congratulations, Lieutenant Sullivan.
Thank you, Deputy. Thank you, Deputy.
Congratulations. Counselor Cruz, did you, Counselor Monahan, you made a motion to take items three through nine collectively?
Yes, and the suspension of the rules and act on them under suspension of the rules tonight.
Second.
So, motion's been made and properly seconded to take items three through nine collectively and act on them this evening. Would you, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Asak?
Yes.
Cudozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
That passes. Now, the vote is on, actually, Mr. Clerk, can you read the appointments, please?
I will. The following appointments are for special police officers of the city of Brockton for a term of one year. Stephen Johnson, Robert Sergio, Scott Aldman, Robert Smith, John Lonigan, Andrew Cesaretti and Peter Skelly.
Okay. Madam Clerk, the, read the roll. We're voting on the appointments. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Cudozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The promotions pass favorably. Mr. Clerk, number 10.
We have the petition of Mass Electric Company requesting permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary in the following public way. Install new pole number 17 on Thatcher Street. In City Clerk's office, May 27th, 2020, hurry to sign for June 22nd, 2020.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please come forward and give your name to the clerk. Mr. Young? I know we have a representative with. Mr. Young, are you, can you hear us?
Yep, I'm still here.
Okay, you're here in favor of the petition, of the petition, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do you want to just tell the Councillors your, say your name, title, the company, just so for the record, please?
My name is Simon Young, I'm a representative for National Grid, one of the Brockton engineers, representing one of the other engineers that weren't able to make it tonight to talk about, are we talking about Thatcher Street?
This one is Thatcher Street, yes, pole number 17 on Thatcher Street.
Okay. Yep.
Councillors, go ahead, sorry.
So, Thatcher Street is basically installing a new pole for a power sensing device and this will be able to help us track the outages more efficiently.
Okay. Councillors, do you have any questions for Mr. Young? I don't see any hands up, okay? Is there anyone else here in favor? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If so, please come forward and give your name to the clerk. Is there anyone else here in opposition? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Mr. Clerk, number 11.
Petition of National Grid and Verizon, requesting permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary to be owned and used in common by your petitioners in the following public way always, North Quincy Street and Bounder Avenue. Installation of four JO P126-50, P125, P124 and P4. Remove three JO poles, P126, OP4 and OP124. Relocate one JO pole, in City Clerk's office, June 9th, 2020, hurry to sign for June 22nd, 2020.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please come forward and give your name to the clerk. Mr. Young?
Right, I was just going over the diagram for the.
Yes.
But my name, again, once again, Simon Young, National Grid, in favor of these old locations, relocations.
So, these are relocations. Councillors, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Young? Questions, okay. Is there anyone else here in favor? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If so, please come forward and give your name to the clerk. Is there anyone else here in opposition? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Clerk, number 12.
We have the petition of National Grid and Verizon, requesting permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary to be owned and used in common by your petitioners in the following public way always, North Quincy Street and Bounder Avenue. Installation of a new currently owned pole 59-1 on Sterling Road for ADA compliance, Nass dot project, in Council and Clerk's office, June 9th, 2020, hurry to sign for June 22nd, 2020.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? So, please come forward and give your name to the clerk.
Hi, again, my name is Simon Young, National Grid, in favor of this petition. We are relocating pole 59 in terms of, to comply with DOT compliance for the sidewalk and the actual pole for installation is to support detention and down Sterling Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If so, please come forward and give your name to the clerk. Is there anyone else here in opposition? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. So, we will vote on these items at the end of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Young. You're more than welcome to stay on with us if you will, but we'll vote on these at the end of the meeting. Mr. Clerk, number 13.
We have the report of the Real Estate Committee for its meeting on June 11th, 2020.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting on June 15th, 2020.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the DPW Commissioner requesting the acceptance of expenditures made grant received at an amount of $920,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Housing and Economic Development Program. The city is not required to contribute any matching funds for expenditures of the grant. The grant will fund construction of a new roadway from Petronelli Way to Court Street, including crossing Frankwood Street and improvements to Petronelli Way. The project will support the full loss of developing municipal property within the city's 40R Smart Growth District.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Deputy Director of Nass Dot acting under the provisions of Chapter 6C and Chapter 81 of the general laws. On May 13th, 2020, the Mass Department of Transportation Highway Division altered the location of a section or sections of State Highway in Brockton and submitted a copy of the plan to file in the Clerk's office in accordance with the statute referenced above.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Director of Planning and Economic Development requesting that the City Council accept the $200,000 40R dividend in appropriate funds, such as $100,000 in fiscal 21 to Planning Department, 40R activities and the remaining $100,000 into the Thatcher Street stabilization account to be established by the Chief Financial Office. Will be used to advance planning efforts, including the development of new zoning around the Campbell Station area and the Southern Main Street corridor to support the Campbell Vision Plan created in 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the interim Superintendent of Buildings requesting the reauthorization of a revolving fund fiscal 21 for the demolition account.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the interim Superintendent of Buildings requesting the authorization of the revolving fund fiscal 2021 for the vacant abandoned fund.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the DPW Commissioner requesting that the City Council transfer $75,000 from Highway Division's Capital Project Outlay to Highway Division's Snow Removal.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Chief of Police requesting a transfer of $300,000 from Police Court to Police Capitol.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Chief of Police requesting authorization to spend grant monies in the amount of $6,000 related to the fiscal 2020 pedestrian and bicycle safety program from Executive Office of Public Safety and Security via the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication relative to the same from the CFO.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Director of Planning and Economic Development requesting that the City Council accept and appropriate a $50,000 grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the purposes of developing transit oriented development solely in the Campbell neighborhood. A required 25% match of $12,500 will come from the Thatcher 40R Smart Growth Dividend.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Chief of Police Department requesting permission to expend law enforcement equipment and technology grant, any amount of $37,987.69 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research by United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor appointing a man who goes as Chief of Police for the city of Brockton Police Department for a term of three years.
Accepted and placed on file.
Okay, we have ordered that the Mayor and our treasure collector be authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to convey the property consisting of 3,255 square feet located in known as Part 10-178 Wyman Street, parcel ID 093-204 to Alex Kryakol, 7.5 Wyman Street, Brockton, Mass, for the purchase price of $1,000. Said property to be sold under the abut a lot program and to be sold without a permanent non-fillable restriction. Said property shall also emerge with a money lot of the purchase. End Council, April 15th, 2020, ready for the standing committee in real estate. That report was favorable as amended.
Councillors, the question is on the amendment. Madam Clerk, can you read the roll?
Asak?
Yes.
Cudozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The amendment. Yes.
Ordered total proposed transfer of $20,000.
We didn't vote, now we have to, the question's on adoption.
Okay.
Okay, so now we need the vote for amended, correct?
Correct.
Shannon, now, so we have to do another one now as amended, correct?
Correct. Asak?
Yes.
Cudozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally? Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro? Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The order passes favorably. Mr. Clerk, number 45.
Ordered total proposed transfer of $20,000 to Park and Authority Personal Services, non-overtime, to Park and Authority Purchase Services, Security, Fire Control, End Council, May 26th, 2020, ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Cudozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Sorry about that, yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yeah.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The order passes favorably. Mr. Clerk?
Ordered that the City Council reauthorize the Park and Authorities Revolving Fund to for revenues from parking fines up to and including the amount of $250,000 of fiscal 2021. End Council, May 26th, 2020, ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Asak?
Yes.
Cudozo? Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell? Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The order passes favorably. Mr. Clerk? You're muted, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, Tony, you're muted. You have to unmute. Tony, can you hear us?
He looks frozen.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think he closed.
I'm sorry.
Flows himself out of the app, so he can hear us, he just can't see us.
Oh, okay.
He's not, Zoom is not what's on screen.
So, should I read his part or should, Robin, do you want to take over? Are you there?
Shirley, I can, I can read.
You have it? Okay, perfect.
Yes. Starting from 47?
Yes.
Okay. Ordered total proposed transfer of $25,000 from Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to Brockton Fire Department FY 2020 General Appropriations Act, Chapter 41 of the Acts of 2019, grant, report favorable of the Finance Committee.
The question is on adoption by roll call vote. Please read the roll, Madam Clerk.
Asak?
Yes.
Cudozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally? Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order passes favorably. Number forty-eight.
Total proposed transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from Auditors Office Consultants for twenty-five thousand dollars and Police Department Personal Services other than overtime dash court for seventy-five thousand dollars to Planning and Economic Development dash other contract services. The report on that was favorable.
The question is on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yeah.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
You there, Shannon? Can you hear us?
I am. It looks like the clerk's back, so.
Yeah, so that one's probably affirmative, right?
That, yeah, eleven in.
The order passes favorably. Mr. Clerk, you're back on with us. Sorry, we lost you there for a minute.
Yeah.
Forty-nine, Mr. Clerk.
Forty-nine? Okay. Ordered total transfer of one million five hundred thousand dollars from DPW Highway Division Snow Removal to City Stabilization Fund. End Council May twenty-six, twenty twenty. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yeah, yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order passes favorably.
Ordered that the City Council provide authorization for payments of the T-Bowl bill in the amount of one thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents from Library Purchasing Services. End Council May twenty-six, twenty twenty. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Sorry.
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order passes favorably.
Ordered that the City Council authorize the reauthorization of the Comcast Revolving Fund for fiscal twenty twenty-one from all cash receipts for Comcast franchise fees in excess of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars pursuant to the cable license contract and that further that the expenditures from this fund shall not exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars without further appropriation during fiscal year twenty twenty-one. End Council May twenty-six, twenty twenty. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yeah.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order passes favorably.
Ordered that the City Council authorize the proposed tax increment financing agreement between the City of Brockton and New Westgate Mall LLC. End Council March ninth, twenty twenty. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
No.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, one voting in opposition.
Resolved that a representative.
Alvin does not prevail.
Second.
A motion's been made for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail and properly seconded. All those in favor of reconsideration, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hands. Reconsideration fails.
Resolved that, I'm sorry, that a representative for Mass Development appeared before the Finance Committee to inform the Committee about the Mass Property Assess Clean Energy Program, PACE, Massachusetts, to provide a financing mechanism to private owners of commercial and industrial properties for certain qualifying commercial energy improvements. End Council May twenty-six, twenty twenty. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yeah.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro? Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order passes favorably.
We have a resolve that Joe Miranda, President of Brockton Committee Access Board, appeared before the City Council to give an update on BCA's progress. End Council March ninth, twenty twenty. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Madam President, can I say something?
Uh, Counsel.
Was that a yes? That was a yes?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting some choppiness on my end. I don't know what that is. I'd just like to thank Mr. Joe Miranda for sending us in the bylaws. I still wasn't clear on whether his role as a board member, if he should be filling in as a, you know, in a management capacity at BCA. But I would like to say in this era where we need as many platforms as possible to be able to disseminate information in different languages, that I would like to see BCA working to its fullest potential. And so, you know, that's something that will be kind of on, you know, my radar at least moving forward is to make sure that there is day-to-day operations so that we get, you know, the best use of BCA as possible. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So the question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The resolve passes favorably. I would also like to comment and thank Mr. Miranda and Phil at BCA for sending the information to all eleven Counselors. So we appreciate getting all that information from them. Thank you, Counsel. Before we move to the orders, I would just like to recognize that we have Mayor Sullivan on. He's been on the line with us since the beginning of this meeting, as well as our CFO, Troy Clarkson, and Chief Gomes have been on with us. So with any of the next items, if, you know, anything comes up and we have any questions, they're also available to answer the questions for us. Mr. Clerk, number forty-five.
Ordered one, that the Mayor of Brockton pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, be and is hereby authorized to accept the grant in the amount of nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Housing Choice and Set of Program. And two, that the Mayor of Brockton be and is hereby authorized to expend and take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the City Department of Public Works.
That's being referred to finance.
Ordered that the City of Brockton shall accept a two hundred thousand dollar forty R Smart Growth incentive dividend from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and reinvest it in planning activities. That one hundred thousand dollars of the forty R Smart Growth dividend be appropriated in fiscal year twenty twenty-one to the Department of Planning and Economic Development. Forty R activities and that the department is authorized to engage professional consulting services to prepare various planning documents for various commercial districts and in particular, the Campbell neighborhood. Said documents may include but shall not be limited to the following: district master plans, rezoning proposals, urban renewal plans, district improvement plans, and infrastructure plans. That one hundred thousand dollars of the forty R Smart Growth dividend be appropriated into a statutory stabilization count to be created by the Chief Financial Officer.
That's referred to finance. Counselor Rodriguez, do you mind muting your microphone, please?
Oh, my little guy there's jumping around.
He's adorable, but I interfering with the.
Ordered that the City of Brockton shall accept a fifty thousand dollar planning assistance grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, EEA, for the purposes of developing transit-oriented development zoning in the Campbell neighborhood and that the required twenty-five percent match of twelve thousand five hundred dollars come from the Thatcher Street forty R Smart Growth Dividend and that the Mayor of Brockton be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Department of Planning and Economic Development.
Referring to finance.
We have an order that the City Council authorize the reauthorization of the vacant and abandoned building revolving fund for the purpose of maintaining the abandoned building registry as well as the closing, boarding up, and care of vacant abandoned buildings. Expenditures from the vacant and abandoned building revolving fund shall be made at the direction of the building superintendent with a written approval of the mayor, provided that no more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars may be so expended without further appropriation from the vacant and abandoned buildings revolving fund during fiscal twenty twenty-one.
Madam President?
Counsel Cruz?
I'd make a motion. We act on this tonight on the suspension of the rules.
A motion's been made to take this under suspension of the rules and act on it this evening and properly seconded. All those in favor, hand, hand vote of taking this under suspension of the rules? Anyone opposed? Okay.
Madam President, if we could ask Mr. Clarkson maybe to, just for the public, to give a brief explanation of what this is, so the public understands why we're moving on this evening.
Mr. Clarkson, the floor's yours.
Thank you, Madam President. This is one of several revolving funds that the city operates. As the introduction by the clerk indicated, this one is for the purpose of maintaining, closing, boarding up, and care of vacant and abandoned buildings. So as you all know, but for the benefit of the public, several years ago, you passed an ordinance that requires owners of vacant buildings to pay a fee if those buildings remain vacant. The money goes into this fund and then can be spent to make repairs or emergency updates to buildings that are, that are part of the abandoned building registry. Just so you know, the current balance in that fund is one million nine hundred and five thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Madam President, just so the public knows, and Mr. Clarkson, correct me if I'm wrong, when we expend from this fund, we put a lien on anything that's an abandoned building and we recoup this money later on, correct?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. You're muted, Madam President.
Counsel, thank you, Counsel. Counsel Cadozo, you have your hand up.
I'm sorry, that was for the previous.
Oh, for the previous, okay. So Counsel, no further questions? So, Madam Clerk, please read the roll on passing this this evening.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy? Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order passes favorably.
Number.
Ordered that the City Council authorize the reauthorization of the demolition revolving fund of fiscal twenty-one for the sole purpose of helping to fund the cost in connection with demolition of buildings in the City of Brockton. Expenditures from the demolition revolving fund shall be made at the direction of the building superintendent with a written approval of the mayor, provided that no more than one hundred and ten thousand dollars may be so expended from the demolition revolving fund during fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two.
Counsel Cruz?
Thank you, Madam President. And make a motion. We take this under suspension of the rules and act this evening also.
A motion's been made to take this under suspension of the rules and act on it this evening and properly seconded. All those in favor of, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? All opposed, no opposition. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Oh, Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order passes favorably.
Ordered total transfer of three hundred thousand dollars from Police Department Court to Police Department Capital.
Counsel Lally, you have your hand up?
Madam President, I would like to move that we take items sixty and sixty-one collectively, and then after that vote, I'm going to make a motion to act on them tonight.
Okay, all those in favor of taking them collectively, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? That passes favorably. Mr. Clerk, could you read number sixty-one as well?
Ordered a total transfer of seventy-five thousand dollars from the Department of Public Works Capital to Department of Public Works Highway Division Snow Removal.
Counsel Lally?
Madam President, I move that we take these under suspension of the rules and act on them tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion's been made to take these under suspension of the rules and act on them this evening. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Madam Clerk, please read the roll for.
Counsel, Madam President, before we do, I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
Just, and probably, Mr. Clarkson can probably answer for me. The mayor may need to. So on the first one, three hundred thousand dollars left over for court for police, the Police Department. Is that, was that fund, is that because of COVID that we weren't in court very much, or is that something we think we can take out of the budget as we get into it this year, or why so much left over in, in court, court, open pay?
Excellent question, Counselor. The answer is yes to both of your questions. So, and Chief Gomes obviously is on the call as well, but he had authorized us to use this line for precisely that reason, because there's a significant balance, about three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars left in there right now, and it's because of the closings of the court that we haven't been sending police officers to court. I believe that the, the mayor and the chief working together along with me had a very similar thought, Counsel Cruz, to you for the fiscal year twenty-one budget, and made some reductions in that court line, because the chief, it has been able to make some reforms in how those people are assigned. So you'll, there already have been some reductions.
That's great. And then, we're moving this to Capitol. What is the, what are we doing with the money?
So, there, there has been a, a problem with a roof leak in the police department for some time, and although we are proceeding with the design and construction of a new building, the, I think the scope and the nature of the leak makes it urgent enough that it really can't wait until we build a new building, and it is impacting police operations.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. Thank you, Chief. I forgot you're up there. It's like Hollywood Squares, so.
Thank you, Counsel Cruz. Counsel Rodriguez, you have a question?
No, that was my question that was answered. Thank you very much.
Okay, Counsel Farwell, you had your hand up?
My question's answered. Thank you.
Okay. So, right now, so, Madam Clerk, please read the roll. So, we're voting on both items.
Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan? Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order's passed favorably.
Audit an appropriation of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents from the fiscal twenty nineteen Project Safe Neighborhoods Law Enforcement Technology Local Solicitation to Police Department Law Enforcement Equipment and Technology Grant Fund.
Counsel Farwell?
Madam President, I would ask that after number sixty-three is read, we move on the suspension of the rules and act on sixty-two and sixty-three tonight collectively.
That's in the form of a motion, Counselor?
Yes.
Second.
A motion's been made and properly seconded to take sixty-two and sixty-three collectively and act on them this evening. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? It passes. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read number sixty-three before we vote on them, please?
Yes. Appropriation of six thousand dollars from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, fiscal twenty twenty pedestrian and bicycle safety program to the Police Department Fiscal Twenty Twenty Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Program Fund.
Counsel, Counsel Farwell, you have your hand up?
Yes, just for, my call's exempt for the public. The police department partnered with the DA's office on this thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and as such, the police department will be able to purchase seven radios, a couple of laptops, and some evidence software, which will be very beneficial. The fund need to be spent, and the goods have to be delivered by September thirty. With respect to the small grant for bicycle safety, that will allow us to put out some bicycle patrols in areas where they have, there has been some heavy pedestrian traffic and accidents. So, both of these will augment what the police department has planned.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Cruz.
Thank you. Actually, the, I was gonna ask the, ask the chief what the technology was that we were getting. I, I assume Sergeant Farwell gave a pretty good explanation there? So, we don't need to unmute Chief Gomes on that. Thank you. So, I'll go with Farwell for the block.
All right, great. Thank you. Counsel Monahan, I'm sorry.
Nothing.
Okay, any further questions, Counselors, for anyone? Okay, I'm Adam Clerk. Please read the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order's passed favorably.
In the hope it does not prevail. On both.
Second.
Second.
A motion's been made for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail, properly seconded. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed for reconsideration? Consideration fails. Okay.
Habit.
Thank you, Troy. Thank you for, and, yeah, for being available to answer those questions for us. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
We have number sixty-four, the grant to Mass Electric Company to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon, together with such sustaining and protective fixtures. As said, company may deem necessary in the following public way: install new pole number seventeen on Thatcher Street.
Madam Clerk, it says a handful, but we've been doing roll call votes for all these, Mr. Clerk, so it goes into the record. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Petition is granted.
Granted a national grid and Verizon New England Inc. to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon, together with such sustaining and protective fixtures, as said companies may deem necessary, to be owned and used in common by their petitioners in the following public way always: North Quincy Street and Bowdy Avenue, installation of four J O schools, pole one-two-six dash five oh, pole one-two-five, pole one-two-four, and pole four, remove three J O poles, P one-twenty-six, OP four, and OP one-two-four, relocate one J O pole.
Question is, questions on granting by roll call vote? Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The petition is granted. Clerk?
Number sixty-six, the granting of national grid and Verizon New England Inc. to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon, together with such sustaining and protective fixtures, as said companies may deem necessary, to be owned and used in common by their petitioners in the following public way always: North Quincy Street and Bowdy Avenue, installation of the new jointly-owned pole fifty-nine dash one on Sterling Road for ADA compliance Mass Dot Project.
Questions on granting by roll call vote? Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yeah.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The petition is granted. Counselor Mendez?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I make a motion to accept a late file, and then I'll be making the motion to take it under suspension of the rules and act on it this evening.
Second.
So, a motion's been made to accept a late file and act on it this evening and properly seconded. All those in favor of accepting a late file? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk, please read the late file.
This is the one on the chief of police, am I correct?
Correct.
Counsel June twenty-second, twenty twenty, I hereby, hereby appoint Manuel Gomes as chief of police for the city of Brockton Police Department for a term of three years. Robert E. Sullivan, Mayor, City of Brockton.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I know, Mayor, you're on with us, and the chief is on with us. Would you like to say a few words?
I would. I want to thank Counsel Ed Lodge Mendez for sponsoring the late file. Just to let you know, Agenda Item forty-three is this exact same thing. It was a communication from me as the mayor, appointing Manny Gomes to be the chief for a term of three years. Past practices allowed us to do communications to, to certain department heads, but legal and also the city clerk thought it would be wise to also just do a formal appointment order, which mirrors Agenda Item number forty-three. So, Chief Gomes, again, has been the acting chief since, since soon after I took office. He's done a phenomenal job, great communication with the council and other elected officials, and more importantly, citizens in the city of Brockton. So, I proudly put this before you tonight, and I know Manny, Chief Gomes, is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and the chief's been on from the beginning of the meeting with us. Counsel Cruz, do you have your hand up?
Was that me?
Yes.
Yes, actually, I just wanted to say, even though this, this is another public servant that I tease back and forth with. I've known Chief Gomes and members of his family for about forty-five years, and I have to tell you that I am so impressed by the job he's done since he came back to this job. We've, we've had a tough time nationally and locally in the last month and a half or so, and his leadership of his men has been exemplary, and his communication with the public has been exemplary. So, as much as I tease you, Chief, I'm glad you're there, and, Mr. Mayor, great job on the, on the appointment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. And yes, and I will express as well, Chief Gomes has done a great job communicating with us and always being available when we've reached out to him. So, thank you, Chief. We appreciate that. Counsel Cardozo?
Hi, thank you, Madam President. Chief Gomes, I'd like to thank you again for all of the communications with the council. I really appreciate that, and I just wanted to, in this climate that we're in, police reform, and, you know, all of the issues that we're having around transparency in the department, to just suggest that we kind of do more to inform the public about the policies of the police department here in Brockton, and to, you know, be proactive in making sure that people understand that, you know, the police department is here to protect them, where, you know, they're not their enemy, especially with our youth. So, I know you're gonna do a great job in that. I know that these are things you're already thinking about, but if there's anything that we as the council can do to support that, so that we're making sure that the public knows that we're all on the same page as far as, you know, the police reform situation and, and all that's going on in this current climate, then, please reach out and let us know how we can work together to work on some of these issues.
All set, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Nacastro?
Thank you. Congratulations, Chief Gomes. It's been my pleasure to work with you these past months. As you know, Word Five is a, a busy hotbed of activity, and I'm grateful for your help and for the help of the police department. Congratulations. Thank you, Madam President.
Counsel. Counsel Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo what Counsel Cardozo just said, Chief. I want to take it a little further and say that one of the things that we, we need to do in this city is, we want to see our police chief a little more visible than in the past. Believe it or not, the residents don't want to see politicians in the streets when we have a issue that is in a, of a criminal matter, of some sort of public safety issue. So, I'm hoping that we take the mantle forward, but at the same time, be a little more visible, because when something happens in the community, we want to see the generals. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, we've known you for quite some time, and I'm sure you'll do a great job, but just visiting is also... Nothing wrong with seeing the mayor once in a while, but a lot of, I think, past, we were seeing a lot more of the politicians than the police chief. So, my hope is that, you know, there's a lot more of you out there versus us on the other side of the... Again, congratulations. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any, any further questions? Chief, would you like to say anything?
Yes. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the, the mayor for placing his trust in me, and I, I want to thank the city council for their support and the very kind words. Some of the things that I've heard tonight will not be lost on me, and we are in the process of taking things in a different direction. Obviously, we all know what COVID has done to some of our public meetings and, and things in the community, but I, I plan on being very, very present, and this department is going to be very transparent, and I want to thank you again for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. But that said, Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Thank you. The appointment of Chief Gomes is a favor, passes favorably. Congratulations, Chief. Counsel Mendez?
I also make a motion for reconsideration in hopes it doesn't prevail.
Second.
A motion's been made for reconsideration, in hopes it does not prevail, properly seconded. All those in favor of reconsideration, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Reconsideration fails. Counsel Mendez?
So, Madam President, I make a motion to accept a late file and also to take under suspension of the rules and act on it this evening.
Second.
A motion's been made for a late file and, to accept a late file and act on it this evening and properly seconded. All those in favor of accepting the late file and acting on it this evening, please raise your hands. All those opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Clerk, please read the late file.
Are we gonna do these on a single basis or collectively?
I believe collectively, we can take them collectively. Do we need a motion for that, or?
Make a motion to take them collectively.
Second.
A motion's been made to take the late file, the, we appoint the promotions collectively. All those in favor of taking them collectively? All those opposed? We're taking them collectively, Mr. Clerk.
The promotion of Asa McNulty to the rank of captain in the Brockton Police Department, promotion of Brenda Perez to the rank of lieutenant in the Brockton Police Department, the promotion of Walter Svenn to the rank of lieutenant in the Brockton Police Department, the employment of, promotion, I'm sorry, Patrick Benavie to the rank of sergeant in the Brockton Police Department, promotion of Adam Reeves to the rank of sergeant in the Brockton Police Department, the promotion of William Stafford to the rank of sergeant in the Brockton Police Department, the promotion of Matthew Graham to the rank of sergeant in the Brockton Police Department.
That calls them, Mr. Clerk?
That's all that I have.
Okay. We have, we're voting on the special police appointments, Madam Clerk.
Madam President, if I could just give some information. Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank again Counsel Lodge Mendez. The reason, the reason why we have these promotions, it's a trickle-down effect. So, now Chief Gomes, permanent Chief Gomes, not acting, he has relinquished his captain. He will no longer be a captain. When he is no longer chief, he is going to retire. He has indicated that to me, and it's been written as such. So, because he relinquishes his captain, a captain opens up, and then the trickle-down, lieutenant and sergeant and the like. So, we needed to hold off on these until Chief lieutenant and sergeant and the like. So, we needed to hold off on these until Chief Gomes was official, and due to the fact that you're in summer session, and it won't, the next, Mr. Clerk told me the next meeting would be July 27th, civil service timelines. That's why this is before you tonight, to get these. And as you remember, Brenda Perez was a temporary. In this case, she will now be permanent, and the temporaries will be permanent. And that's what's before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation, Mayor. Counselor Cruz?
Yeah, just, I don't want to be, I'm glad to get these done, but does the ordinance allow for renouncing the captainship, or captaincy, or?
Yes, yes. This past practice, when Chief Paul Staninski Jr. was chief, he gave up his brass so that another individual could be promoted up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That's eleven in the affirmative.
The motion passes favorably. Congratulations to the police office, to the newly police officers that have moved up, moved up in the rank, and congratulations, Chief. Thank you. Counselor Cruz, you have your hand up?
Just wanted to ask, make sure the clerk's office, can you make sure that somebody emails us a list of those, those names?
They have emailed to you already. They emailed them right before the meeting, late this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Farwell?
Yes, Madam President, I know you may have some announcements or others, but before we get into that, I wanted to mention that Deputy Chief Kenneth Gilpatrick, age 97, who served for 34 years on the fire department, passed away two days ago. I answered many a call when I was on the police department with the deputy. He was a compliment professional. He also was a little veteran. He was the, in the initial assault on Normandy Beach on June 6th, 1944, and of a greater generation, have lost another one. And I would just like to ask that we take a moment of silence in honor of the deputy. Thank you, Madam President.
May he rest in peace. Counselor Cruz, you have your hand up, or?
No, that was up from before. All set?
Actually, I would also, I would like to send our condolences on behalf of the full city council to our, to Janice Fitzgerald, the director of the Council on Aging. She lost her mother-in-law, Esther Fitzgerald, I believe, yesterday, and Esther was a wonderful lady. It made everybody laugh. She was a regular at the Council on Aging. And I just want Janice to know that our thoughts and prayers are with her, and Esther will be greatly missed. So, may she rest in peace, and our thoughts and prayers are with the family. On any, councilors, does anybody have any? Counselor Farwell, you have your hand up again, or is that old?
No, that's old. Pardon me.
Okay. So, before we end our meeting tonight, I would just like to remind councilors and everyone at home that the, our budget hearings are tomorrow night. So, it's Tuesday, June 23rd, and Wednesday, June 24th. From 6:00 PM until 6:30 on both nights, we're going to have a public comment time where residents have either sent in emails, or they're going to send them via YouTube, and we're going to read them from 6:00 to 6:30 as part of the public comment part of the hearings. And the hearings will commence exactly at 6:30 PM for the first night, and as well as for Wednesday evening. So, two nights of hearings, and they will take place in council chambers. The council will be, you know, whoever's able to be in council chambers will be there. It is, it is prepped for us. It's ready. It looks beautiful. It looks like it's missed us, but it's, we're ready to be in council chambers with the help of the mayor and the building department. It's been, you know, set up and disinfected, and the city councils will hear the, will have the budget hearings in there. We'll listen to each individual department head. We're following all the regulations by the Board of Health and the building department, so we're following all the rules. But, so that starts tomorrow, and we'll be live, of course, on BCA and possibly YouTube, and people can send their comments via that, via YouTube, or email, which is posted on the city website. So, thank you for all, for everybody's help, from the Board of Health, of course, our mayor, and the clerk's office, who's done a great job posting, making sure that everything is posted. And hopefully, you know, this is a first. I commend the new councilors. They're not new anymore, but Counselor Cardozo, Mendez, and Thompson, but I think this is gonna, it's going to be new for all of us. I don't think anybody's done a budget this way. So, we're all in the same boat this next few days. So, we're, we're going to work together and, you know, get through the next few days hopefully smoothly. And, and, you know, if you have any questions, of course, you can always reach out, reach out to any one of us. But, thank you again, and thank you to, to all of you for all your patience at BCA, of course. So, and then afterwards, we'll resume back on Zoom for the next couple of meetings until we figure out what we're, what's going on. And so, no comments with no further business before us this evening. This meeting is adjourned.